Good morning, everyone. It is 8:31 a.m. on this incredibly rainy, we are blessed day with the rain, and hope you all had a Labor Day weekend. It's hard to believe we're September already, but here we are. And I thank all of you in the audience for being here today. So we'll start as usual with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And we have chaplains Gary and Marcella Jenkins here today to lead us in both.
Good morning.
Good morning.
God bless you. Good morning, everybody. All right. We thank God for this rain. Will you join with me in a word of prayer? Father in heaven, in Jesus's name, we bow before you to say thank you for your grace, your mercy, your long-suffering and patience, and all that you do to keep us safe. We thank you, Lord, for the rain that is here. Now, Lord, we ask you, last time I was here, for some rain, and you gave it to us. Now can you taper it down just a little bit, so that... In the name of Jesus. We pray, Father, that you bless the members of the San Angelo City Council and our mayor, the Honorable Brenda Gunter, and all of those that are here in the city in various capacities. We thank you for this beautiful city of San Angelo, Texas, that we call home. And we ask you to come in and sup with us. We seek your face for counsel. Your word says in 2 Chronicles 7:14, "If my people which are called by my name will humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and I'll forgive their sin, and I'll heal their land." Heal our land, Lord. Our land needs a healing from you. The only way that America can be great is when you are leading your people and when your people serve you. We thank you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Do the pledge at this time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
This morning, we have one proclamation. And today's proclamation is for, let me get this off of here, for assisted living communities, the National Assisted Living Week. So if all of you that are here today to help us celebrate that, please come forward. Come on, if you want to come up, come up. Come on. And you want to just stand right over here would be great, okay?
Turn around.
And turn around and face the audience, okay? So just, it's okay, I can, I can do this. Residents of assisted living communities are active members of the larger community, offering their knowledge, life experiences, and involvement. Their past contributions continue to be a vital part of San Angelo's rich history, and their ongoing participation deepens our Texas identity. Assisted living is a critical long-term care option for older adults and individuals with disabilities that fosters choice, dignity, and independence. Assisted living communities are committed to excellence, innovation, and the advancement of person-centered care. In 1995, the National Center for Assisted Living established National Assisted Living Week to honor the contributions of assisted living communities in providing long-term care to America's seniors and individuals with disabilities. This year's theme of National Assisted Living Week is Inspiring Generations, and highlights the incredible care provided by essential caregivers in assisted living facilities across the country. During this special week, assisted living communities across the country are encouraged to organize activities and events which celebrate the dedication of staff, the individuality of residents, and the deep connections formed in these settings. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby acknowledge the week of September 8th through the 14th, 2024, as National Assisted Living Week, and ask our citizens to visit or call a loved one, family member, or friend residing in any care setting and offer a kind word.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Brayden Park Assisted Living and Memory Care has been part of the San Angelo community for many years now, and we're gracious to offer those opportunities along with other assisted living communities here in San Angelo. The biggest thing to remember is that assisted living gives everybody that opportunity to continue their life and to grow the things that they want to do as they become seniors. And again, we're proud to be part of that, and we look forward to visiting, having you guys visit us next week. Monday, we'll have a big grand opening or ceremony for Assisted Living Week, 10 a.m. at Brayden Park, so feel free to grab your friends and come on out. Thank you.
We will now open the meeting portion of public comment. So issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the ears, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience today who would like to come forward and speak?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Charlotte Anderson keeps San Angelo beautiful. Want to give you a quick reminder of our tire event, which will be this Saturday at 8 a.m., and we're very excited. I think we're going to have beautiful weather, this cool weather coming in is just going to be perfect for a little roll-in and stacking. We've got several, several volunteers, so it should be a great and a successful event. Just to recap, our Dr. Alper presentation was fantastic. We packed the house at the Alumni Center. We had about 152 plus or minus guests from 41 different businesses, so that was just really fantastic. And the reason I'm here today is we're very excited to honor, of course, all of City Council, Mayor Gunter, and Mr. Daniel Valenzuela, but we received another award, and it is for an elected official. And this is a surprise. So, the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling recognizes an elected official who's leading nobly in their community or region to support Star Mission to advance recycling through partnerships, education, and advocacy for the benefit of Texas. The elected official is committed to recycling and sustainability issues within their community, region, or statewide. The all-star elected official commits their time and energy to something they are passionate about, and they stand as a leader and steward for the Texas environment. So as you know, Harry Thomas has been the president on our board, he's an advisor on our board. He has participated in every single event. He has inspired our Board of Directors, our advisors, our advocates, and our volunteers to keep coming back and doing what we do. Very instrumental in the development of our children's program, and also keeping, keeping the kids on track while participating in all those events as well. So we're honored, I know you don't know about this, Harry, but just very excited that the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling acknowledged his work and advocacy through their Texas Environmental Leadership Award. So I have a little certificate for you. He's speechless. And thank you, guys, for your support. We appreciate it.
Further public comments? Susan, you want to come forward?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is John Mark Hoag. I live in single-member District 5, 311, South Jefferson. And I'm here this morning to ask the Council to consider an amendment to the abortion ordinance of the City of San Angelo. When the proposal was first put in place, of course, Roe v. Wade was the law of the land, and a provision was placed in that ordinance providing that it would not go into effect until and if the Supreme Court of the United States overruled Roe v. Wade. Of course, that has happened, and we've seen two years of the circumstances that have arisen with the complete abortion ban put in place by the State of Texas and also under our ordinance. What has become apparent over the last couple of years is that there are circumstances that were not foreseen at the time those laws were put into place, or that were not considered in the abortion, and the same with the abortion ordinance at that time. What I think, and what I propose, is that the Council amend that ordinance to put into place a provision similar to the one that was initially put in provision. It's basically indicating that as circumstances change, as legislatures change, as Congress changes, the law is going to change. This is now a political issue, a public policy issue that will be decided at the state and the national level. I would propose the Council consider putting into effect an amendment to the ordinance stating that this ordinance remains in effect until 30 days after either a national law has been put into place governing the right to an abortion, a state law is put into place governing a right to an abortion, or the passage of an amendment to the United States or the Texas Constitution. That way, whenever the law changes, we can just go into effect and be complying with whatever the federal or state law is regarding the subject. I do have proposed language that I'll submit to the City Attorney's Office for distribution, and that's all I had to say this morning.
Thank you very much. Susan, would you like to come forward?
Susan Kenny, and I'm with Ballet San Angelo, which is at 82 Gillis on the SAPAC campus. On July, and good morning, Mayor and Council. On July 16th, I presented Ballet San Angelo, an overview of our organization and our need for hot funding. Thank you for that opportunity. I'm returning today to respectfully request an increase in our allocation from 15 to 25. And it's due to our increased scope of public work. We have daily programming that, where we demonstrate our nonprofit status, working with seniors, families, childrens, and individuals year-round. And we, we have needs-based tuition assistance, and the Joy of Movement programming for seniors, and the quality of our staged original productions. I believe it justifies this increase, and we attract heads and beds, and we annually invest significant marketing dollars to make our town shine. I understand that valuation takes staff, valuable staff time, and that it's a difficult issue when you crack this open, but I think every three to five years or so, it's good to get fresh, verifiable data on the amounts of those allocations so that they are reflective of the programming. And through the years, with SACAC, sort of no matter what I reported, you know, numbers varying, the allocation remained static. So that's what I would like to put forth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Susan, if you would, submit that in writing to Carl White and myself, because we already have those on the agenda coming up, so that's, you'll have to submit something in writing. Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will move into our consent agenda portion of today's meeting. Larry, do you have an item you'd like to pull from consent?
No, ma'am.
Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
Nothing at all.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Moved by Harry, seconded by Karen. Any public comment concerning any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
With no nays, that consent agenda is approved, 7 to 0. We will move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is considered a warning, WU-04-24, Glenna Edmund, 29th Utility Improvement to Darnell Construction LLC, in the amount of $9,71,467, including a project contingency utilizing $6,620 and $628 from the water capital fund balance, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Shane, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is part of the, our street replacement program that we've been going on now, working into our 10th year now. This is the next street up for construction, so this is to replace the utilities under those portions of all the street. One of, well, I guess, two reasons. One, it's a large number today to do this, it's a fairly large project, but also, we do need to use, we do need to do a budget amendment to move funds out of our fund balance for the project, and so that's, that's one of, one of the main reasons you're seeing this today on the regular agenda, so. But again, just...
With this coming out of fund balance here, fund balance will be sufficient to cover future needs?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I just didn't quite have enough in operating capital this year to cover this one, so we are having to pull out of fund balance to do this, but we do have sufficient fund balance.
Do I have questions from Council for Shane on this project? Yes, Tom.
Shane, can you just tell them where you're starting, where you're finishing, where you're going to go, and how far east and west on that?
Okay. This, this will, starting at 29th at Chadburn, going back to the west, all the way back around to Houston Hart, Loop 306, that whole section right there will be. And portions of it, there's, on the utility portion of it, there's, most of the work will be from Kirby Park up to Chadburn, and then another fairly good bit of work right there at the Houston Hart up to Mercedes area is where we're going to see fairly intense work in those areas for the utility portion of it. But again, there will be some along the entire way, and then, of course, the road, when the road, when we get ready to bring the road construction bid for y'all to award, that will be for the entire section, so.
Will you be able to run this one as fast as you did Chadburn, once you get your underground done?
Once the utilities are done, there is going to be a significant portion of it that will be the same process that we used on North Chadburn, so we will push through that area fairly fast. There will be some areas that are going to be concreted sections that will go quite a bit slower, but again, that major, you will see from the, basically, Houston Hart, Mercedes area, from there all the way back around to Kirby Park at the bridge, will be, will be that process, the FDR Full Depth Reclamation Process, and that will go fairly quickly.
The only thing I see, I'd like a little help on, is when you get close to working the schools and around Kirby Park, if we maybe work with Brian, just give some updates, because there will be a lot of people working around that, trying to get their kids to school and...
Yeah, and as, and as we move up closer to Bryant Boulevard and WWAFCO and all of those major businesses up there, we'll, we'll definitely coordinate with all of those businesses one-on-one, plus, we will also work with Brian to get stuff out to the, to the media, so that we, the general public will know as well.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Shane?
Leave to approve.
I have a motion for approval. May I have a second? Larry seconded. Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, that item A is approved, 7 to 0. Item B is considered a resolution for a variance to Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages regulations, Section 5.02.033, prohibited licensees to allow the sale of alcohol for on-premise consumption at 3029 Sherwood Way, a property within 300 feet of a public school. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Valenzuela, Aaron Benoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This morning, we have just a, a case where a TABC license is not able to be issued due to Chapter 5 having a restriction of 300-foot requirement away from a publicly-supported school. This is elementary and secondary, so McGill School is across the road. I'm going to just switch to my map real quickly there. The property is right here. It's called De Roma, a small Italian restaurant in what used to be, most of us probably remembered as a Pizza Hut many, many years ago. It has changed over the, over time. You can also see Henry's Diner, and just over here is Hidalgo's. Those are also properties that currently have TABC license to serve for on-premise consumption. I'm going to take those off and go back one slide. So in our, in our ordinance, the City Council can make a finding of A, B, C, D, or E to promote the variance to the 300-foot requirement. It does seem like this area has been commercial for a long time, it has supported restaurants for a long time. We do not see that this is out of the ordinary for a TABC license to be issued there. Sherwood Way is a very major road for students to cross, and again, I want to just emphasize, this is for onsite consumption. This is not like a convenience store where somebody could come in, grab something, and walk out. So this is onsite consumption. So again, there's the school right across McGill Elementary School.
Well, we should, what we should say out loud is, the reason it's come up is because McGill has expanded, and has, the new portion of McGill has come out towards Sherwood Way. McGill has always been there, but until they've done this expansion, they were not within this feet.
Well, and you can see here, this kind of darker blue, that's the expansion area that the mayor is talking about. And they did have a change that it's property line to property line, and so that's why it's 114 feet there, showing just the property line to property line. We've seen this scenario over on Nickerbocker as well, with SAISD being in that area and encompassing a very large property around some of our general commercial areas. I did notify the school district. They said they were opposed to the variance. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. It's not a requirement to notify them, but since this ordinance really deals and supports them, just wanted to let everyone know we did notify them, they were opposed. City staff recommends approval of the request. If there is a desire for City Council to approve the variance, I recommend us choosing one of those items as the reason for the variance in your motion, and then we'll move forward from there. Any questions for me?
Well, what I want to make sure we understand is, it's pretty hard to say no to the request when Henry's is right across from there and Hidalgo's is right across from there, so I think, in my opinion, it's hard to say no when you have businesses that will be selling alcohol. And that location was there, even though it was a different business before the expansion. And I don't think we can penalize a business when others surrounding them have that availability. And we understand the school's reason for opposing it, but from a reality check here, it's pretty hard to say no. So that's my comment. Would somebody else like to make a comment? Karen?
I completely agree with the mayor's comments, but we're a little curious, did Henry's require a variance? Because that looks as if it's probably less than 300 feet as well.
That is correct. It's less than 300 feet. Now, the age of Henry's and the continuance of the TABC license there allowed them to stay compliant. As our ordinance was written, it started in 1996 for our TABC, and then it's had some changes, and the 300 feet didn't come around until 2018. And so Henry's obviously has been there longer than that. This just happens to be a new property owner, a new leasee in that property, and for them to get a new license, they would have to come forward to get a variance.
When, let's say, Henry's has to update and renew their liquor license, they won't...
They are allowed by right at that point.
That's what we need to say out loud as well.
Yes, ma'am.
By right, regardless of what their license is.
Only if they change significant ownership and TABC made them get a new license in a new person's name, then we might have to come back for a variance for that reason. But as long as it stays in the same family, there's a continuance in our ordinance that allows that to continue to the next generation and such.
So, just to clarify, I mean, the variance is specific to the property, but of course, to be able to do it, they have to have all the TABC licensing, the city license, but it would run with the, the property.
Right. There was someone on this end? Yes, Tommy?
Karen, could you go back to the state?
So that when we make a motion, it will have to include one of these items, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That says, "I ask for approval or denial based off of one of the A through E items."
That is correct.
Yes, Tom?
Staff suggest item D. I mean, is that what y'all are, I mean, it's not fair and consistent, so...
It is not consistent. I would think it's an undue hardship for a restaurant owner these days. I mean, that's very challenging for them.
I was going to say C.
Yeah. So I think there's a number of those that could be found, just depending on what your desire is.
So you can't say, "I'd like to make a motion," and my finding is to say A through E? Do you have to be specific to one item, or say all of them?
I mean, if you found that all of them apply, you could say that. You don't just have to choose one, but...
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I would, I'd make a motion to approve this request based upon item C creates an undue hardship, and item D does not serve its intended purpose.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tom. Public comment?
Good morning, my name is Arnoldo Gutierrez, I am here representing Di Roma, and thank you for giving us the time to present our side of the story, and, and I agree with all of you. Uh, this is a new business, and as Mayor Gunter has, uh, told you all, uh, this building had a beer license previously, so we just ask respectfully for your consideration to approve the motion set before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote, all those in favor of passing this, um, item B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item C, consider reading a public hearing of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $5,960,706, or 11.66% increase, and of that amount, $671,739 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. Tina, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor, as you said, this is the second reading of the budget. Um, we'll just go through our slides here in case you have any questions, um, but this slide just shows all of our operating revenues and how they're split out, our expenses by type, and then the revenues versus the expenses, showing that property tax generates 50% of revenue, other taxes 33%, charges for service 11%, and other at 7%. Whereas, public safety makes up 59% of our expenditure budget, public works compromises comprises 12%, other services 12%, admin at 14%, and transfers at 4%. Here's what we have already included in the FY25 budget, um, lots of initiatives for public safety, um, as well as some revenue, or some additional monies for the River Stage, and a part-time recreation employee, um, also four-and-a-half percent employee raises. Um, that amount, of course, for the police department will be set aside and allocated out as we come to a conclusion of the meet and confer agreement.
You want to go back and read each one of those separately?
Sure. Fire time overtime increase, or fire department overtime increase, police department overtime increase, a debt issue for immediate needs, 6.3 million of that was for public safety, 1.2 million of that for the River Stage, uh, police recruit is converted to a lieutenant position in this budget ordinance, and there's a part-time recreation employee converted to a full-time employee, and then four-and-a-half percent employee raises.
Are there any questions or comments from council considering these items? We have, I think, been working on this since January, so we've had lots of opportunity to talk through, have discussions, and come to a conclusion that this is in the best interest of the public and our citizens to approve this budget as presented, and has been discussed for months. So with that, may I have a motion for approval?
This is a, a record vote on this one.
So tell us what we need to say.
Um, we just, first one's like that.
You'll just need a motion and a second, and then you'll just need to go down-
Individual vote.
-into an individual vote.
Is there a motion to approve this budget as presented?
Move to approve.
Tom's moved to approve, seconded by Larry. We, public comment? Seeing none, we will, um, each individual person, starting with Tommy.
I vote aye.
Tom?
I vote aye.
Harry?
I vote aye.
Larry?
I vote aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
I vote aye.
Brenda Gunter?
I vote aye. So the budget amendment is approved, seven to zero.
We'll move on to item D, which is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance fixing and leveling ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use in support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas for the 2425 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. Tina, you're on again.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we are proposing a tax rate of .7544, which is an increase of just over five cents. Um, and this, uh, this one actually requires specific language on the motion, so.
Questions for Tina before I ask for a motion? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval?
So move.
You must read that.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .7544 per hundred-dollar valuation, which is effectively a 13.34% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Larry. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a, a vote. Now, again, each of us must read this, correct?
You don't, you don't have to read it, you just have to vote.
Okay, so, we'll take a vote, Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Motion is approved, seven zero. We'll move into item E, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. You're on.
Thank you, Mayor. So this first one is for the short-term tax note, which we've discussed here ad nauseam, but I'll go through it really quickly. Um, we're allocating $250 for a fire truck, $1.5 million for radio infrastructure upgrades, $3.7 million for body cameras and tasers, $800,000 for radio equipment, $1.2 million for the River Stage, and then issue cost of $85,000.
If you add all of the items listed above that support our first responders, fire, and police, please tell me that number.
6.2 million, I think it is. Is that right, John?
So when you look at our investment back into public safety, you'll see that, um, the support is very strong for the asks and for the needs of both our fire and our police department, and this is a significant, um, contribution to what they do for all of our citizens in San Angelo. So, um, I think, um, it speaks loudly to what the citizens have said to us as council members, that we want you to take care of our fire and our police, and this would certainly indicate that we're doing that.
Mayor, I do want to point out as well, for the past five years, the contribution's been about $26.6 million. So, um, we do understand that we prioritize over the past, actually, the past five years has been infrastructure, public safety, and economic development. So we really have, city council really has put their money toward the areas that have been a strategic priority over those years. So again, that's about $26.6 million for public safety.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
I think it's important for the public to understand that.
Yes ma'am.
All right.
Mayor, I'll move approval there.
I've got a couple more.
Oh.
So we have a budget amendment here for fleet services, um, they are just, uh, budgeting for additional revenue from the funds, um, as costs have increased for materials, parts and repair. Intergovernmental funds, this is the money that we received from COVID for the non-congregate shelter program, we're proposing to use that for fire station land, the temporary shelter for the animal, um, services, and, um, partially funding public safety communications flooring and furniture purchase.
Now, these are new, we haven't seen those before.
Right.
So, um, when did these come up? Because these are new items.
So we have money that we finally received from the federal government for the non-congregate shelter program that we did during COVID, and so since we have this funding and we have these additional needs, we're requesting to use that funding for these purposes.
Was there other items where money was requested, and we selected these three out of all of the items selected, or were these the only three items selected?
No, ma'am, we have a spreadsheet that we keep track of, and we sat down with Daniel, and some of the items that needed funding were funded through the short-term debt issue that you just saw right before this one, um, and then this was some additional money that we had that we could meet some of those needs as well.
Are there questions for Tina on this list, on these items? Okay, so with that, then, go ahead.
I still have a couple more, sorry. Health insurance fund, um, they are increasing their revenue through, um, savings and other funds, and also in offsetting $750,000 for insurance claims and premiums. Property and casualty fund, they have some additional revenue from insurance recovery that they need to budget, the $47,000, they'll additionally, additionally be pulling about $130,000 out of the fund balance. And then civic events fund, this is the remainder of what they currently need for Phase 1 of the River Stage, it'll come out of the civic events fund's fund balance, and there will still be a little bit extra for Phase 1 after that, but we'll just leave that part in the fund balance until we know what it is and how much we need.
So we're not negatively impacting anybody's fund balance?
That's correct. That's it.
Okay, now Tommy.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, these amendments as proposed.
Second.
A second by Harry, public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, that motion is passed, seven zero. We will move into item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance designating reinvestment zone number 24-2 to be located at the Easterly, that's a new word, Easterly, 12.9 acres of land, more or less, out of the 32-acre tract of land, more or less, out of survey 1114, abstract number 8036, F Tankersley, Tom Green County, Texas, and being more particularly described as parcel two, and that certain warranty deed dated June 1, 2007, of record at instrument number 633054, official public records, Tom Green County, Texas, for the purpose of providing an ad valorem commercial industrial tax abatement. That was a lot. Does any, does anybody know exactly where this is?
Exactly.
Okay, exactly.
Mayor, our attorney gets paid based on the number of words they can fit into a caption.
Yeah, the number of numbers, yeah.
Good morning, Michael Dane, interim economic development director. This, we have had previous discussions about the, uh, a company that our, um, chamber partners have been talking to about construction of a facility within the city limits. Uh, the company has not asked for cash incentives, but have asked for, uh, a tax abatement. Uh, some of the tax abatements we've seen in the public discussion in recent years involve complete abatement for a 10-year period where the taxing authority received no benefit for 10 years, except for the secondary economic activity. Council, as, we, we're having these discussions as council was going through a very difficult budget cycle, we just took some action on that. Council made it clear that they wanted to see some day-one benefit to the rest of the city, and, uh, that if we were going to consider, uh, amending our tax abatement ordinance, that we do it for this one situation only and not throw the door wide open. That, uh, because we were, because of the timing of the discussion, council was very concerned about, uh, protecting the public interest with regard to tax abatements. And so, we have modified that tax abatement ordinance to allow this industry type only at this point, as an additional opportunity. And so this company comes with, uh, an approximate tax impact to the city of $4.1 million over the first 10 years. Uh, the proposed abatement, which we will bring back in a contract, uh, in future council meetings, would be 85% for the first three years. The benefit there-
Abated, it would be abated 85%?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and, uh, the benefit to that is that the public begins benefiting from that tax revenue from the first year. So it's not a complete abatement of all property taxes, but that's in future action. This action, in order to execute that contract, we need to establish a reinvestment zone where that abatement contract will have its impact. That's action today, we're establishing that, that reinvestment zone, and so-
Will other businesses or development benefit from this reinvestment zone?
No, this is isolated strictly to this, in fact, as you pointed out, Easterly being a, a, a new word for this kind of activity, not even their whole property will be subject to abatement, just the Easterly 12-point, approximately 12.9 acres. So not even the whole property is subject to the benefits of this abatement. And so it's very tightly controlled, consistent with council's expectation. We'll give the abatement, we'll consider the abatement if the general taxpayer will see some benefit from it, and, and that's what we're setting up here. So, uh, all that to get to the point that today, we're creating the reinvestment zone where the abatement contract will have its impact.
And why do we need to create a reinvestment zone in order to do this?
Uh, it's just a state statute, before you can enter into an agreement, you have to create this zone. I mean, like Michael said, this is specific to one piece of property, but a lot of times, it's not. It could be a bigger zone, and so multiple properties could apply, and, um, you have to have that zone to create uniform, uh, terms for agreements that come out of that, so it's just required by law.
We're jumping through the state hoops, is the short answer.
Okay.
So, be on the north side of 28th Street, east of Armstrong. This is the site. One of the questions we dealt with, with council, is how does this fit into the zoning and land use plan? Uh, Aaron has looked at this, and I think his opinion was that this, uh, is allowed. Uh, electrical battery storage facility, approximately $160 million investment in plant and equipment, three-year, 85% tax abatements, what we're anticipating bringing a contract back for. The 10-year, the first 10 years, which includes the, the abatement time period, the, uh, additional revenue to the city is anticipated, anticipated to be 4.1 million and change.
But we're not voting on that. We're voting on the reinvestment zone.
That's exactly right, Mayor. Um, a secondary kind of benefit is, my understanding is that this type of facility periodically needs its batteries updated or replaced, and so, right now, it's not, it's not factored into these numbers, but periodically, they'll have to refresh, replace elements in that battery storage facility, which would, of course, uh, increase the amount of taxable value in a future year.
Explain to the public what the electrical battery storage facility does and is.
I can, I can give you a very simplified version, is that it's a huge battery, it's a building with huge battery capacity in it. They, the typical pattern for electricity rates is that in the evening, early morning hours, rates are low because there's low demand, but in the afternoon hours, when things are hottest, there's high demand and the rates are higher. So there is a natural predictable movement in those rates. My understanding is that the strategy is to fill the batteries, pull electricity off of the grid in those low-demand times when the rates are low, so they buy low, and then put it back out on the grid in the afternoon when the rates are high, sell high. So they buy low in the morning, sell high in the afternoon. And I think there's just a small difference in that, and you have to repeat it over and over, but they think that that strategy yields enough, uh, net revenue to fund a $160 million capital investment.
It's a good explanation, so that people don't think we're taking old batteries and digging a hole and sticking some batteries in the ground, right?
Yes ma'am.
So, we just need to make-
That's kind of beating you.
We'd have Charlotte back up here for a K-SAB event if we were gonna do something like that.
So I just wanted to make sure the public understands what this electrical battery storage facility is. Um, knowing that power is a big issue, this would supplement and be an advantage for the network of power, and, um, so I think it's a good thing. Other questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance designated reinvestment zone 24-2 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Harry, public comment? We'll take a vote, all those in favor say- All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes seven zero. We'll move on to item G, the last item on the agenda. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter 11 Utilities, Article 11.05, Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan. Well, this is an interesting thing to read, drought contingency plan today.
During rainstorm.
Yeah. Of the city of San Angelo Code of Ordinances. And Shane, you're on.
All right, thanks, Mayor. If you remember, a few months ago, we came to city council and had y'all adopt the drought contingency plan for 2024. We update it every five years. And so we sent, once, once y'all adopted it, we sent it off to the TCEQ. The TCEQ has reviewed it and has sent back some revisions, suggested revisions for that. We have included those suggested revisions within the drought contingency plan, and we're bringing it back before you today as basically an updated plan and to have it placed in our ordinance. Most of the, it is mostly just language updates. There, we did add a little bit of teeth into it, is how we deal with our third-party wholesale customers that we contract with for water. So it does give us a little more teeth in that regard as to, as to what, what we require of them and, and what they have to do to maintain their contracts with us, so.
Questions for Shane? Larry?
I almost hate to ask this. The 12 noon to 6:00 PM prohibited sprinkling. Is that 12 noon arbitrary, or is there a scientific basis?
It's, it, and when it was, when it was put, there is a scientific basis for it, but I think there was when we first initiated the drought contingency plan way back in the day. A portion of that was kind of give and take between staff and council. You know, staff would have liked to have seen that shut off at 10:00 AM, but it's due to, it's due to rising temperatures and how hot it is outside, and the evaporation rates. As the evaporation's rate increases, and you're sprinkling water up in the air, your evaporation, you're doing less good and you're losing more water. And so that's why that, that time was instigated. It's basically during the heat of the day, not to water during the heat of the day.
Other questions for Shane? Okay, so with that, may I have a motion for approval? Oh, did I need to ask for, no, I haven't had a motion. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Larry. Public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. That completes our regular agenda items today. We will be going into closed session, executive session under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections: A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 605, Rio Concho Drive. We will be adjourned for this closed session. 9:53 AM on this September the 3rd, there are no announcements to be made following executive session, so we'll move into the follow-up administrative issues with the announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Are there any?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Tom?
I brought it today, and we were talking about budget, but I'll throw this one back to Shane. When we were talking about budget, we were talking about the difficulty with Kramer's getting all of our fleet vehicles and getting caught up. We were behind so many, I just want to know if we're caught up on what we need to on purchase on fleet vehicles? And that might just be an email, but I actually had somebody else bring that up in my district. Are we caught up in our acquisition of fleet vehicles to, or I guess there's no other that will say it, but are we current with what we're supposed to have? And we can bring that up later.
Okay. Anything else? All right, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Move we adjourn. Second.
All of those opposed? None opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Sweet.